Okay, Susan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve agenda, I say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from July 14th, regular meeting.
Make a motion to accept the notes from meeting. Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, greetings to our residents, staff, and board members. Tonight is full of good news and recognition of jobs well done. I want to recognize the good work of our public works department, especially Rachel, for the high grades on our water system from the inspection of the Department of Natural Resources. I also want to mention that the street repairs are being noticed by our residents, thanks to Andy and Troy. Also, Myrma, which is our liability insurance group, recognized us for a rating of ninety-three out of one hundred on their recent visit. This is a compliment to Aaron for your record-keeping and everyone for being safe on the job. Next, I want to express appreciation for the good work of our officers and what they're doing in the field. Officer Unstuck was just awarded the firearms qualification ribbon for meeting an annual firearms proficiency. Detective Horn received the life-saving ribbon. He also was awarded ribbons for getting his bachelor's and master's degrees for the specialty unit of Detective Human Trafficking Task Force firearms qualification. And Officer North was presented with the award of excellent ribbon for his sharp observation and life-changing response. He also earned an instructor ribbon for TASER, five years of service ribbon. For the, he's been here five years already, wow. It went fast, and firearms qualification. Lieutenant Cheyenne Schultz was also awarded several meritorious service ribbon for her oversight in evidence and property room. Community and civic commitment ribbon for founding and sustaining the Westside Shop with a Hero. The award of excellence for her work investigating the 2.8 million investment case. Field training officer ribbon, because she is the trainer for the new officers. And also, so that's an instructor ribbon on TASER also. Specialty unit ribbon for administration and major case squad, and also firearms qualification. These commendations reflect more than just time served and actions. They represent character, compassion, and competence under pressure. We are incredibly proud of these officers and the example they set for our department and our community. Last but not least, the diligent training that our very own Chief of Police finished from the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association, completing a trilogy, supervisory leadership, command leadership, and executive leadership. Congratulations, Scott.
Thank you.
We have a great team here in Sunrise Beach, and we appreciate everyone. Any questions or comments, please call any board member. Do we have any visitors' comments this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, my name is Debbie Dixon, and I live on Cliff Drive. And I oppose the rezoning on Beechwood Drive. My concerns fall in two areas. One is both long-term implications. One, pardon me, is for our Beechwood neighborhood, and the other is for Sunrise Beach as a whole. Regarding the Beechwood area, the property that is in question sits at the end of Beechwood Drive, which is about as far from Highway Five as you can get and still be on Beechwood. The rezoning request covers three separate lots. The first lot is the house. The house has been in disrepair for over a decade. It's now being fixed up, but since it will remain a residence, I'm wondering why that lot needs to be rezoned. The back lot, which has been used as a dumping ground for years, there's even if you look at the pictures that were provided for the zoning request, and actually the picture that Larry has is even clearer, you can see the dumping that was already taking place back then. In the last couple of days, some of the junk that was near the street has also been moved to the back lot. The street side, where I understand that a shaft is proposed, this area in particular has been cluttered with boats, rusty ivies, insulation rolls, a camper, a semi-truck, and overgrown weeds, some of which is now hidden and covered up. There have been some improvements lately, but mostly these improvements have been after the rezoning request. If the house is to stay residential and the shafts area is meant to be cleaned up and used as a residence, again, I ask why this property needs to be rezoned. At the planning and zoning meeting, it was discovered that the village was unaware that some business activity was already taking place there. Tonight's packet from the city manager noted that Missouri law allows for no-impact businesses in R1 zoning. I think that's very important information and something that the board should seriously consider when looking at any residential to commercial rezoning, especially starting with this one. Keeping the property R1, the owner can still move forward with his plans, the house, the shafts, and his small business without any rezoning. I ask this board, what is the goal and what will be the actual revenue that the village will gain by this rezoning? An important item for me is that once these lots are rezoned, the village and neighbors will have no say in the type of business that goes in there. It could be a bar, a dance hall, an RV park, a hotel, or even a junkyard. As for the broader Beechwood neighborhood, there is a grant application to repay Beechwood Drive. Shouldn't we fix the road first before inviting more traffic and commercial activity? Which brings me to my second concern, the long-term direction of Sunrise Beach. The rezoning request committee is about more than just three lots. It's about the direction of Sunrise Beach going forward. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not recommend this rezoning. What message does it send if that decision is ignored? And what is to stop other property owners with negligent homes or junk-covered lots from requesting their own zoning changes? Right now, Sunrise Beach is in the middle of a comprehensive plan and nearing completion. That plan is meant to reflect what residents want for the future of our community. I participated in a citywide survey, and I'd like to highlight what stood out to me in the community engagement summary report that we received at the planning and zoning meeting. And I believe the board has a copy of that. In particular, on pages nine through eleven, when asked, "What do you like most about Sunrise Beach?", "Small-town feel", written on here is by far the most frequently mentioned theme. Respondents consistently praised the small-town atmosphere, quiet side of the lake, and low traffic as major positives. Many emphasized a desire to preserve the village's character and avoid overdevelopment. Next is "peace and quiet". Words like peaceful, quiet, calm, and serene appeared repeatedly. Residents valued the tranquility and lack of congestion compared to nearby areas like Osage Beach and Lake Ozark. The third item is community and friendliness. Numerous comments highlighted the friendly people, sense of community, and support of neighbors. Several noticed that Sunrise Beach feels like home and fosters community and camaraderie. There's also one for low commercialization and limited government. A few respondents explicitly stated, "We appreciate the lack of heavy commercial development and minimal government regulation." And then on page ten, we have "community worries and transparency". Many respondents emphasized the importance of listening to residents and local businesses. There were calls for greater transparency, public input, prioritizing full-time residents' opinions for decision-making. And then on the last page, the very last thing on that report, civic engagement and planning. Residents expressed appreciation for being asked for input and encouraged continued outreach. There were calls for common-sense planning, balanced taxation, and long-term vision that includes both seasonal and full-time residents. To me, that's very important. Approving this rezoning is neither common sense nor long-term thinking. It sets a precedence that runs counter to the values and visions of Sunrise Beach and its residents. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything different to say?
I do, as you all know, I was at planning and zoning the other day, and I want to know how many of you are right view or right front? Are most of you? That's what I thought. Well, from what I can tell, none of you can see this business from your property, and one of the concerns was that it would be an eyesore. I don't know how it could be an eyesore if none of you can see it from your property. I think that if any improvement on property down Beechwood where there is many businesses, and you all say it's a main drive, well, in all cities, towns, and villages in the United States, Main Street is a mixture of commercial and residential. So I am still in favor of the rezoning of that property.
Anyone else that has something different to say? We already know about everything.
My name is Jim. I see it a lot when I drive by, back and forth like that. And I just had my kids down, my birthday would be the other day too, by the way. But anyways, they came down there, and even my grandkids are asking, "What's going on here?" Anyway, today, my concern is about safety. I mean, is it smart to go into something like this, approve property like that? I mean, is that property safe? Is it being soil tested? I mean, do we have any concerns over there with EPA or anybody coming in? Or, I mean, that's a concern that I would have before. I think it's best interest of the city. Be really careful with going in something like this and not knowing what you're getting into, and then somebody shows up, and that's a big problem for even the landowner. I mean, from the street, you can see some big, there's some big buckets or something. I have no idea what it is. It looks some type of fuel or oil or something. I don't, I don't know what it is. Has always been in buckets, is there someone in the soil? I mean, so all I'm saying tonight is, I think, the city of Sunrise Beach, the property owner, the resident, and the community, I'm concerned about the safety of the property as well.
Something new?
It don't matter, go ahead, Scott. I'm Scott Banker. My wife and I run this on a large waterfront property right across the street from Mr. Carter's. We're opposed to a commercial zoning in our neighborhood as this will cause increased traffic, noise, environmental concerns to a quiet residential area. The C2 general commercial zoning will open the door for just about anything to operate there in the future. The Village of Sunrise Beach put a lot of time and effort to create planning and zoning for the benefit of the residents, and we believe it's wrong to change it for the benefit of one individual, as you knew the zoning when you purchased the property. Quoting from the Village of Sunrise Beach Comprehensive Master Plan, goals and objectives, page thirty, under goal, preserve village character, prevent the spread of resort, commercial, and related activities into established residential neighborhoods. Two, preserve property values by preventing incompatible land use. Again, we're just asking the Board of City Leaders to deny this zoning provision. Thank you.
Go ahead. I'm Larry O'Dell, Cliff Drive, and yes, we live on Ocean Front, not Lakefront. At least that's what I call it. And we do drive by there every week, so it doesn't matter whether you live next door to it or whether you drive by at all times. And I think if he would have worked around and maybe got a license, I think it was mentioned that Sunrise Beach included a city license, and they do, and he doesn't. And then I also have a map that I shared with Steve and some other people here. Hit the front door, his little operation now, but that little quoncet that he has is just five foot from Debbie Stroger's line, which is not proper. So I think he has kind of been operating without a license. I think he's not operating fully on his property right now. And I really do have a concern, I used to do insurance reports, and I really do have a problem with fire and boats, especially in a residential neighborhood. If you think that's not a residential neighborhood, it starts at the church, and from there on, except for Pottery, we're pretty much residential all the way down. That was set up to be residential all the way down. As I said before, the main corridor out here is where we want our businesses, where people can see them, not down in a residential area. So I know you've seen these docks and these boats burn out on the water. In fact, I think last week they had a, maybe like a ten-gang boat dock completely burned down with the boats in it. Once those start, those are hard to put out. And fiberglass burns very hot and very fast. And I live close enough to it. If it's dry, I don't want a fire, and I know Debbie Stroger was on a fire right next door to it. So even though he's going to put in an extinguishing system, he's got an awful lot of boats outside, and those catch. And so, to me, putting a boating business, it needs to be down on the highway in a commercial zone, not trying to rezone a residential zone. And as Debbie said, we're more worried about what might, you know, I'm not saying the guy's old, but he's old enough that he might not want to work on boats the rest of his life, and we're kind of worried about what might go in there afterwards as a commercial business. So we ask that, in our neighborhood, which is mostly residential, whether you turn and go down the Kansas City Way, or you go down Middle Road, or you go down Cliff Drive, or you go down all of it, it's more residential down that road. That's the reason the sewer water was put down there first, because you have more customers and more residential. So that brings you in more money to pay back the loans. So I think that I would really hope that they would kind of turn that down as being commercial. Once we get it started down in there, it would stop. So I guess that's all I have to say. Debbie said most of it. I don't want to repeat it.
That is?
I have something I want to say. I think everyone here showed up for the opportunity to be heard at the meeting. And at a minimum, their name and their position and where they live on this matter is not taken, and it's not recorded into the minutes. And I believe that would be appropriate for everybody to have an opportunity to express their position.
Sir, this is not a public hearing, and we do that for public hearings. But this is not a public hearing, this is just visitor comment time, am I correct?
We were led to believe at the planning and zoning meeting that this was a place for public comments.
It is, visitors' comments, but it's not a public hearing.
Everybody here is a visitor.
Are we supposed to put their names in the minutes?
So the names?
Well, so, let me, yes, James Carr, you're representing the city of Village of Sunrise Beach. I would recommend that while there is no requirement to do any sort of verbatim, you know, recitation of what each of these individuals has said this evening, I think it makes sense for at least their name and their position to be noted in the minutes. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. Aaron, do you know all the names of everyone?
I pretty much have everyone's name for everyone to introduce themselves, those that I know. I don't know.
I'm Delaney, I live on Cliff Drive, and I'm opposed to the rezoning.
Anyone that I don't have will get a hold of it. But yes, I have for the most part, I know most people's names and signings, and if not, I will get a hold of them. But yes, I have everyone's comments and down, summary of what you've spoken about.
I don't care if it's the same, I came to be heard. My name is Carla Lentz, I live on Cliff Drive as well. I'll just do a brief synopsis. Debbie put it beautifully, and I agree a hundred percent with her. I am opposed to the rezoning. I worry about the increased traffic, the noise pollution, and the safety. Those have all been mentioned before. Those are valid concerns. I have infrastructure concerns. The congestion at that corner is already an issue. Any of you who drive that daily know that's an issue. And it, numerous times in my five years living there, it's like, whoa. People don't stop, they don't yield, they don't pay attention to the stop signs. That's just going to get worse. The road conditions, having a higher-traffic business, that could damage the roads even more, and it's a constant battle for the village to try to keep those up. I have a fear of decreasing property value depending on businesses and being that close to a commercial zoning. I'm also concerned of future development in the area. I feel setting a precedent of rezoning could just open the door for maybe a direction that none of you even want. I know I don't want that. And my last comment is to, I feel any business in a residential area like this will disrupt the existing character and the sense of community that we have. And I don't want that. It's a wonderful community. It is a residential family community, and I would hate for anything to inhibit it.
Okay, anybody else?
So what's your name?
Charlie Hayes. I live off of Beechwood, I live on Kansas City Way. And last week, I was opposed to the zoning, and after I took a close look and realized that everybody that came to the meeting does not live on Beechwood. Beechwood is mixed-use zoning. There are more commercial businesses on that street than any other business. So I have no problem with the man changing his zoning, so he can get the proper insurance. That's all he's doing, getting a proper insurance. There are going to be businesses on Beechwood, whether we like it or not.
I guess I have something to say. I'm, I'm Brenda Baker, and our property is on Beechwood, several acres of it, and it's right across from the rezoning area. So that would impact what our property would be worth if we ever, you know, wanted to subdivide it to build houses up there, they'd be looking directly at the business. So it's, what she said isn't correct, because that is our property, straight across from there. And not just a lot, it's quite a bit there.
I would like to ask this lady, do you have any buildings on that property right now? Or is that just a wooded lot? Is it just woods? Okay, so it's all wooded? I was just curious if you have buildings there. I haven't, I haven't seen any when I drove down there, so it's just woods, right? Yeah.
That doesn't mean.
No, it doesn't mean anything, but I just wanted to point out that that's not like you've developed that property anytime, it's just sitting there, wooded across the. Soon as they're done with the comments.
Okay. Is that anybody else?
Yeah, me. My name is Barry Perry, and I'm one-six-four, fourteen. So I do have waterfront property, and I drive by this every day, in and out, everywhere. So I'm an assurity broker and insurance broker. So I wouldn't sell insurance to that. Whoever owns it, I would not sell insurance to that property. I mean, the way it's set up, the way it looks, it looks hazardous. You don't know what's on it. I would not. It's, I would send an investigator out, take a look at that, and he would write it up as, no sir. So I think, I don't think, the way I look at it is, if it looks like that now, they're not, it's never going to get better. So it's only going to get worse. And I don't, like, everybody's saying, look next after that. So if you really want that kind of business that looks like that in our neighborhood, I even don't care how it looks, but I do. And it does not look like a business to me. And the other thing, one more thing, please. If you're, if you are in a business, you've got a business plan. If you're going to borrow money to have a, you have to have capital. I mean, finance business, you've got to have capital to run a business. In order to get capital, you have it, or you've got to go back and get it. The bank will say, "What's your business plan?" I don't know anything about what he wants to do with that property. What's he want, what kind of businesses do you want? What's he going to do? What's his tools? Where's his shed? I don't even see a business there, I just see a bunch of crap in a lot.
Anybody? Is that what we're done?
No, I just want to add, I'm sorry. I wasn't aware that we had to live on Beechwood to have an opinion. I, at the winter, can see that property, and I have to drive by it every single day to get to my house. And I agree with what everyone has said. Rezoning's a bad idea, comment was made last time of being quieted. It literally looks like a junkyard. And the best indicator of future practices is past practices, especially with dealing with the same people. I agree with so much. It probably isn't going to get better. You might build a new shed there, repair garage, and it'll still be surrounded by derelict stuff. I don't want to drive by it every day.
Okay.
Can you just clarify something for me? Sorry, I'm not a big part of this.
Can you read that right there?
I mean, is the decision already made? That's my question.
Oh, in your ordinance, it says a prominent vote recommended.
That was not the case, right?
No.
So that's an error?
That's an error. That is not, that's, you just got that ready in case.
Because when we were here, like, last week, I think everybody here voted.
It was recommended by the planning and zoning to us, the board, not to approve commercial zoning.
So it was not to approve it?
Not to approve.
That's what I thought, okay. I'm sure I was at the right place.
All right. Did you have a comment you wanted?
Yeah. First off, I'd like to tell everyone, appreciate your concerns in making statements at the meeting. To let you know that I took this position not to better myself, but to do what the community wants to be done. So that being said, I am redacting my request for rezoning.
All right. Perfect, thank you, Steve.
And I would further like to address a few issues that some of you had. Your insurance guy talking about capital. I don't need other people's capital. Stay tuned to watch the progress. That's what I'm going to tell you.
Can you fix the house then, if you got the money? Can you fix up that house then, if you got the money?
It's being done. Would you like to go inside?
Oh, I know you got new air conditioning, but other than that, I can drive by.
Would you like to go inside?
Let's not get into that, please.
The building that's being put up, the shafts building, is not a barn, it is not a shed. It is a commercial, red-iron fabricated structure. It'll look better than anything on Beechwood, period B. It has decorative overhead doors, a house built to the side. It's all new construction. What you see, the insulation that's out there, that was from a storm damage. It is being disposed of. All the red iron has been covered up now, so you don't have to look at it. That is a part of that red iron-structured building.
Do you have an anticipated condition date?
I would hope to think that by springtime, that building's going to be up.
Did you just say that you're redacting it, that you have, you are going to be putting up a commercial building?
It's not a commercial building.
I thought you just said that.
No. It's a red-iron building.
What is that? I don't know what that is.
It's a steel-structured building.
Steel structures. Like a sword.
Not going to see it anyway.
No, it does not look like a sword.
What does it look like?
Shells?
Shells. It looks like a large house with big doors. It looks like a large house with big doors.
Barnum Minium?
Oh, like a barnum Minium? You're gonna say something like that?
It's the newest stuff that's out. Built last...
And so everyone knows, there are cameras over there. When you go traipse across that property and I check the cameras, I will be making a call.
I'm probably surprised, I'm Steve Bartol. I've been on the board four years. When, before, I think he, I don't know, the day he owned the property. And I've been back in there and there's piles of dump. And he's cleaned a lot of that up. There was steel, water heaters, stuff, old air conditioners that they gave him, I don't know where they come from. And I would assume, filled, filled with different trash. And he cleaned all that up, because I've been over there several times. I, I couldn't believe that you guys complained and I listened to you. Because I, I believe the character of a person that will ride through all of this and not do more damage, but will clean this area up. And that street needs cleaning up. We know, we know that.
No, I don't know about, ever seen any. That, I mean, it's just been bad for so many years. That's why we're here, it's been bad. And from our advantage point of view, when we drive back and forth here, it doesn't look like it's gotten any better in ten years. And it's nothing personal, Steve, I told you that, but that's the first thing I've done here. You're a neighbor just like all these other people here. We don't wanna look at it. That's the bottom line, we're tired of looking at it.
It's being bad.
It's not, Steve, ten years, dude. It's not getting any better.
Okay, okay. I think we've closed this issue.
Ma'am? I have Mr. Carter's question please. So you're saying you're withdrawing your request to rezonate, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
And you're, but you're gonna continue to run the business there and...
I didn't say anything about the business. I said I'm still putting the building up.
Okay, that's...
And I've got three standing offers that people will already want to buy that property. One is GFL and environment.
But those are businesses that you're, that are offering?
Pardon me?
Those are businesses that are looking to buy it?
Yes, sir. And in the village.
Okay, so this ordinance, Bill 2025-13, is to be disposed of there.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be reading that.
Okay.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to 2025-14, if you'd like to read that. And that's the first and second reading.
You got a first and second reading or just first?
First and second on the...
Okay. So Bill number 2025-14, an ordinance approving the final plat of Sunrise Sprout subdivision, a two-lot subdivision of property generally located at 23 Spring Cove Road in Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri. Motion for first reading.
Accept the first reading.
I'm not sure you accept the first reading.
I second it.
All favor?
Aye.
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 Bill number 2025-14, an ordinance approving the final plat of Sunrise Sprout subdivision, a two-lot subdivision of property generally located at 23 Spring Cove Road in the Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri. Second reading, roll call vote.
Motion? Motion for...
Motion for second reading.
Second.
Oh, okay. Roll call.
Greg Gordon?
Yes.
Steve Bartol?
Yes.
Susan Snyder?
Yes.
Greg Carter?
Yes.
And Michael George?
Yes.
Thank you. And the same with 2025-15, first and second reading.
So Bill number 2025-15, an ordinance approving the final plat of Alien Acres subdivision, a two-lot subdivision of property generally located between 1115 subdivision, a two-lot subdivision of property, um, sorry, 1115 Beachwood Drive in Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri, first readings.
Motion?
I thought, I thought that it was gonna be, uh, removed. This is for Beachwood.
No. This is a different one. This is for, this is a Alien Acres subdivision, not...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I thought that was the one.
Sorry.
I bet.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
I second it.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Okay, so for second reading, Bill number 2025-15, an ordinance approving the final plat of Alien Acres subdivision, a two-lot subdivision of property generally located between 1115 Beachwood Drive in the Village of Sunrise Beach. Motion for second reading.
Make a motion for second reading.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Is this Steve Bartol?
Yes.
Greg Gordon?
Yes.
Susan Snyder?
Yes.
Michael George?
Yes.
Steve Carter?
Yes.
Okay.
Resolution 2025-15?
Resolution 2025-15, a resolution of the Village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri, adopting a policy establishing requirements for tenants or renters establishing a water and sewer account. Motion to approve.
Motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any old business? Uh, the department reports, Scott, did you wanna say something about your report?
Yeah, sorry guys, I'll, uh, I attached last month's report with this month's package. I'll try to get the actual one out to you tomorrow. However, um, in the last month, we responded 95 calls, 634 self-initiated activities, issued 45 citations, 142 warnings. We did have the launching of the ribbon ceremony, which was very nice. Previous to that, uh, I had the opportunity to take our officers and their families out bowling at night in Jeff City. It was nice for the sheriff's office to kinda cover calls for us. And it just gives officers a, a nice way to connect off-duty and build that morale and team, you know, building. There was no taxpayer funds used. Couple highlights, uh, we had the opportunity to assist Osage Beach Police Department with a human trafficking case that they had, Detective Horn, which we've invested some training and money in with the human trafficking, was requested specifically by Osage Beach Police Department to help with the handling and downloading of some electronic data. So that was, that was kind of a little star on our chart for us. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity to have lunch with the Lieutenant Governor and the Director of the Lake of the Ozark Shootout. Uh, they're presenting us with $6,600 from shootout funds. This is gonna go to buying road cones. We have an enclosed trailer that holds our youth and community outreach programs such as the pedal cars. It's very old and not appealing looking to, to the youth. So those funds are gonna go to rewrapping that with a nice race-themed, uh, safety message type trailer. And then also it's gonna help us get the prescription pill disposal kiosk that we've been trying to get. Only other thing really that I can think of that was on there that I need to add is we did make an amendment to the Blue Shield Grant, that $50,000 grant. I talked to Greg a little bit about it, is we initially were gonna use the vast majority of those funds to go for Taser Axon body cameras, which was over $40,000. I met with Motorola and we were able to broker a deal to where we were only, not only gonna get six body worn cameras that are comparable to the Axon, we're also gonna get three in-car camera systems for less than what Taser Axon was gonna be. So I think it's definitely more financially responsible to go with the Motorola system. And they were field tested by Osage Beach PD and they said they were very comparable to the Axon as well. Other than that, PD's running very solidly. We had a busy July, expecting a very busy August.
Very happy to hear all the awards that we've given out, that was nice. Public Works, I know you're back there somewhere. Anybody calling?
Uh, just real quick, uh, we had a three-year annual report on our water towers. It's the best report the city's ever had. Uh, they were very appreciative to see all the water that's taken care of at water towers and in the ground. They were very excited to see the new meters in there that were blanking out and weren't working, plus the new high tide which will regulate our water 24/7. We still have to physically, once a day, but that regulates it 24/7. So DNR was really thrilled with what we got. And as was mentioned before, our paperwork was horrible to say the word at best. Uh, between Rachel and Dahlia, they really went to town and dug and found stuff to get to paperwork. Not only did they give what DNR wanted, they got what DNR wanted, what they'd like to see and beyond that. So they did a really fantastic job of that. Uh, we're gonna finish up asphalt on cliff and Pisces this week, providing Mother Nature and we don't blow any more dry line hydraulic hoses. For any of you that was back on cliff, that's what happened. Of course, I can say weather permitting and everything else. I was asked to get bids on concrete in a building for, uh, Public Works to keep all our new equipment in it, which I've done. Concrete right now is running pretty high. But I got bids anywhere from about 25 grand to about 34,000 on concrete. I was also pulled a look into a building. We got three bids, two were stick buildings, they're 60 by 40. Uh, one was a steel building, it's 30 by 60. The steel building is actually cheaper and comes insulated. All that will be given to the board later on. Uh, for those of you, I know everybody's been wondering a great deal on, mowing will start next week. And we'll continue mowing until it's done. If you think we missed an area, please feel free to call up and just let us know. Well, then that, that's it, unless somebody's got any questions.
I do have...
Yes, sir.
I know I just discussed with you the other day about the PE building. And I wanted to inform the board of the opportunity. Uh, I'm willing to donate that 30 by 65 PE building to Public Works. So that they will have a place to store salt and get their equipment for the winter out of the weather.
PE building is one of those half low...
Roof building for Quonza Hut, kind of more of like a park Quonza Hut.
I think, uh...
It's a nice one, I mean, if you, I give it, I'll take it.
I think once he has the written bids and everything for the concrete and all the buildings and everything, that maybe we would have a little meeting in here as far as what direction we should go. I, I haven't been out there to look at anything. You've got the lot prepared and...
All, every bid is for them to come in, do all dirt work, everything. It's concrete, when it's done, it'll be plumb for the drains in each bay. There will be enough for a toilet and a sink and a faucet outside. So, uh, but that's everything, that's them doing all of it.
We, we have water there, don't we? I mean, you have...
You actually don't. You have the tower, you have a fire hydrant.
Okay, all right.
But the water's easy, the water's right there, I can tap that, the water's the easy part. Stir up a little bit.
Well...
We haven't made a campfire yet, just those individuals out there.
Yeah. Okay, uh, and like I said, we, we need to have a discussion, so maybe we can...
I was just preparing bids.
Yeah.
Oh, exactly. I just, in foresight, in foresight that this doesn't all transpire before this winter.
Oh, definitely, I'm 100% what you say, call that. Anything we get them, I'm 100%.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want that going through another winter.
All right, no questions? We're all good?
Thank you.
All right, have a great day.
Good job, good job.
Uh, administration, Aaron, did you have anything you wanted to report?
Yeah, I have two things to mention. Dahlia and I got a chance to go to the Mirma Conference and were able to, again, visit with our representative and get a better view of what they're expecting with our risk management. So we did, again, um, have a great test for one of our first visits, we had 93 out of 100. So that was an excellent, um, visit with them. Um, and we are currently working on our six-month report and you should see that soon in, uh, the paper cut up, so. Hey, you did press.
Good job.
I have one thing I'd like to ask about this draft.
For the tenants?
Yes, okay, I'm kind of backtracking a bit. Um, under the billing and payment responsibilities, it says in the event of non-payment, the village will notify the property owner, landlord, and services may be suspended until the account is brought current. Currently, I'm getting a, a late notice from Dahlia and she's now started sending me a math that they're, that is past due. Will I be also beginning a notification if in fact they are disconnected?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing, I, I kinda mentioned him briefly about this the other day. I, I, on your accounting, I don't know how we pro, how you guys prorate bills or if you even do prorate bills. Because I got a bill here for services from 714 to 717. So we've got four days of service for $91.33. So am I supposed to be billed $91 and, I mean, is there a proration that goes on on these bills? He said he was gonna work with me on this, but I'm just curious.
I don't think that it does prorate. I think that $91 is a typical...
This is, it's a standard monthly fee.
It's a standard monthly rate, but I only have four days of service.
Yeah, and in this, in this situation and others like it, what we do is just basically, um, forgive that initial month and then go into the next month.
It was my understanding, we put your name on it because you wanted the water on and we had already turned it off for the building.
From the building, yes, and we have that situation.
And that's the only reason we did it that way and you were gonna put in...
I did, and Andy, just so you know, every single one of my units at your valley now has its own shut-off with inside each individual unit.
I do appreciate that very much.
As much as I did, I did. And we told you we were gonna do this, so we did.
I appreciate this, I, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see this.
Okay, very good. Good. Glad to see you here. Okay, finances, uh, everybody have a chance to take a look at the bills? And where we are?
Uh, the only question I had was on the, uh, the Haines equipment. Was that due to the restructuring, that one lift station?
I had, was surprised on that, probably no, Ben.
22,000?
You, I was gonna say you have three buildings.
It looks like there's a regil, 16,000 now.
You have three different builds in there. You have two for fire, one for Beachwood, one for, um, three different invoices for that. There's three, there's three different bills in there. There's, um, two that range about 6,500 and then there's another one in there. So one of them, yes, has to do with woods, the two over fire, the ones for...
That's, that's what, that's what I just wanted.
Two, two different...
Yeah, the woods is...
Yeah, yeah.
Pain in, what it's getting there.
Yes, so. But yeah, those three different invoices for Haines Equipment.
Okay, so do we, uh, let's, let's move before we go any further with the finances. We have a forgiveness here request and I don't know how written. Do I have it in here, in this package? The letter? Oh, you do. Oh, no, you don't. I saw it.
Yeah, he did submit a request.
But it's not in here. The issue with the bear bottom leak, unfortunately. Uh, as you know, this is the new owner of the bear bottom. That area that they put the campers in now across from the boat dock, boat ramp? Okay? So the prior owner had dug all that out, busted all the rock up, made that flat so they could stick trailers or campers in there. Apparently, something was underground, is that correct, Andy? Underground and it started leaking. And when Rachel went down there to see what was going on, because I guess, is the procedure that we saw that the, the usage was getting up there?
Right, we read the meters, we noticed the high usage, we notified the property owner, so on and so forth. Rachel went out, determined it was leaking, it was eventually repaired, but there was a lot of water loss.
Lot of water loss.
And that was over a period of how long, I don't think it takes?
I don't know exactly, I think it was at least 10 days, um, maybe a little bit longer. Do you know, Andy?
It was around that 10, 14 day mark.
The leak itself was 10 days. The reason it spread out to two months billing is because he didn't pay it right away and he was gonna ask for forgiveness on it. None of that water went into the sewer. So it was all leaked water. So he's asking for a forgiveness and since I don't have a letter in front of me, I don't know how much it is.
Did man, did man in history ever get a forgiveness letter from us?
Not to our knowledge, not to our knowledge.
We, we tried to look back. I, I have not personally remembered that that happened.
A leak, a leak to me is different than what happened here. This is like at least 10 days, I'm thinking longer, but I'm, I'm wrong. Nobody has approved how long it's leaking. But it went more than a day, more than two days, more than 10 days. So what is it gonna be? So what is he going to be responsible for? We lost a lot of water.
It's my understanding that it didn't pool.
No, but y'all said that.
It was underground. They had to.
Side of it. So if you had any sort of rain or anything of that nature, um, most people would have looked at it as in disrepair. But no, Rachel ended up meeting with their maintenance guy between him and her, went up there and they found the spot. At that point in time, shut that part off. Now I'm guessing you got it fixed, but. But again, it's kind of an off the, that's one thing with RV parts, some water lines go everywhere. And if you're the furthest guy in the back and yours is the one that's leaking, we're likely, nobody got to see it.
Well, it wasn't caused by the campers. It was an underground leak. It was a, so the piping, something.
Punched hole and.
Yes. Something hit the, the water line. So.
We don't have anything that monitors that.
Just, just the meter that runs it.
And they did signal us that they're over there.
So anyway, it is, you remember how much?
Um, nine thousand, nine thousand two hundred forty-four is what he is requesting. Um, and again, half of that roughly half is sewer. The total usage, that's in dispute, if you will, is 354,000 gallons. So there was 354,000 gallons through that meter. And we are confident none of it got into the sewer system. So we do believe the sewer can be forgiven frankly without any issue. It's really the water that's.
Steve, what's their normal monthly usage?
Uh, it varies of course, the season, it's higher during the regular season. For that period of time, their, their normal usage would be very minimal frankly.
Oh, you saying that it was.
It was initially, I think it was initially discovered with the March bill that went out, say March 20th.
Before the campers were actually there. We have the policy right now where we will allow one forgiveness on. Sometimes it's residential, sometimes it's commercial. I know this is a lot, so we'll just have to decide. If we want to do it.
Can you split it with them? Or is that to be the full amount? There's no bill on the sewer, right?
Right. Well, that 9,000 represents a sewer.
Does.
So we could, we could, we could just eliminate that.
So they get by half.
So then the, the actual water that was used would have been 4,500.
Roughly speaking, yes.
Remember that calculation? But he also had, had want to go in other places. Well, he wouldn't have had any campers down there.
No, not in March. So I mean, it's, it's, uh, totally up to us to vote whether or not we want to give him this one time forgiveness.
Well, question is on this, I've never understood this. One time forgiveness, the next, the next month, you have a new owner and he has the same problem. It's one project forgiveness, not one person. I don't like the idea that, I mean.
Well, we don't know if we've ever done that.
I know, but we got problems with the awarding. Because. Well, it's obvious there needs to be a cap to put on the forgiveness. I'd be, I'd be making a motion to go back and calculate the water to maybe the previous years, April bill or March bill. And, uh, forgive the sewer because of what they think there. And forgiveness of that, yeah. About 50%. I'd make a motion of that. Second.
All in favor?
I, I.
Okay. Half the amount.
Okay. So basically we'll forgive, what we need to do is calculate the actual.
Actual water.
Per that, per that value.
Yes.
And then divide.
So go put a dollar amount here, just the calculation of the water only. And I'm sorry, I jumped right over you. Your turn.
Um, yeah, just real quick. So, uh, our August sales tax received was much improved from the pre, previous month. We still are tracking below last year, which of course is a concern. Our sales tax is just really kind of bump up and down. Um, I did, I was in Jeff City last week. I talked to legislative staff, both Senator Verstetter as well as Representative Vernetti and brought some of my concerns to their attention. And I will continue to follow up in that regard. Big picture, our financials are fine. However, um, we are tracking a little bit below budget, which obviously is a concern. Um, I do expect the numbers improve, um, as we go forward. I think the real tale will be told later in the year with those November, December receipts. So, um, again, it's, I wouldn't necessarily call it, um, I'm not overly concerned, but it's still a little bit.
Up percentage over down.
About 8% between one cent and use tax together, um, for the same period last year. Now, last year was the biggest year ever. When you compare it to the year prior, um, I think we're still, we're tracking ahead of 23.
So you're saying six months for 8% now?
Yeah. Yeah. I track it on a calendar year basis. And so when you look at the January to July period, um, we're about 8% below last year, that same period.
We had a very slow start to the year.
Too cold.
So, you know, when we look at the outlook of what the weather is going to be, summer could go in November.
Yes.
Or it could snow.
You would only hope, right?
So CDBG, I was in Jeff City for two and a half days last week at a administrative training. It was very helpful. If we are awarded this year, we propose to do the administration in-house, which essentially is me. There'd be cost savings there. I'm very capable of doing it, especially after going through the training. I knew going in, CDBG is very competitive. It, it always is. This year they had 91 applications and a total of 23 million to disperse. So gives you an idea of, um, and the maximum award is 500,000. So I think we have an excellent application. We do. It's just a matter of, you know, making.
Is that October that that is?
Yeah. The staff there said they could, they would anticipate, um, issuing awards as early as October and November. They do need their agreement with HUD is the federal fund source, which they don't have yet. Uh, they do anticipate the money coming, coming through, but so fingers crossed there. The comprehensive plan update. So August 26th is Tuesday night, four to six o'clock at the, it goes up for Realtors Building, Old Drive. Um, we'll send those notices out. Wednesday or Thursday this week. It's the second public forum and it's, it's, I mean, they're all important. But this is one in which the results of the, uh, the initial survey will be, uh, given to the, the people in attendance. And really a lot of the questions is, you know, are we on the right track? Um, a lot of the results from the survey were a little bit mixed. And so, you know, I have some questions I want to pose to, to that group as well.
Are you sending by mail postcards to all of 6507?
No, we are not doing that.
You're not? Okay.
We're not. We're, we're posting it, um, on the website. Um, we do have Facebook page. We don't use a lot, but I'll use it for this. So that initial focus group will all be invited to attend. If you recall, there was that initial focus group that was the very first step in the process. And then the public in, in general. After that, I've already started drafting various pieces of the comprehensive plan. The, not September, but October planning and zoning meeting I would hope to have. If not the full draft plan, at least the meat of it, which is the goals and objectives piece, that will definitely be ready by October. And I'm trying to get the whole plan together, but. So please attend that August 26th meeting if you can. And congratulations to Chief Craig on that FBI training. I know you've already noted that, Susan. Um, he took the initiative, you know? It was his idea. I was very supportive. I've had officers in, in my past go through that training and I think it's excellent. So. Good job there. Also, as Andy said, we did have a good, good report from DNR. They had not filed a written report with us, but the initial finding from the war inspection was very good. We get, uh, inspected every three years. And then finally I'm going to a meeting tomorrow in Jeff City, uh, which I think is kind of important. There's, there's something called the unfunded needs list with MODA and these are projects that have been identified kind of on a regional basis, but there is, it is not in the MODA program. Highway five between F and Hurricane Deck Bridge is on the tier two unfunded needs list. And so I want to go there and kind of lobby frankly for that. Um, it is in the design and scoping and I, I know I'm aware of that. Um, I don't know how far along they progress with that. So I'd like to know a little bit more of that as well, but I think, and this is just my opinion, but, um, as long as I've been at Sunrise Beach, which is a couple of years now, that section from Hurricane Deck up to, uh, you know, that central commercial corridor, bad, need needs improvement, in my opinion. So I want to push on MODA a little bit for that tomorrow. So, yeah.
And, uh, just so everybody hears it again, we need someone who lives in the city of Sunrise Beach to join our planning and zoning committee. Uh, we have been absent a person for a long time and if you've got an hour that you can spend once a month and it's not always, we only have a planning and zoning meeting when there's something to zone. So it's, it's not 12 months. Sometimes it's six, sometimes it's eight. But if you want to, or you know, somebody that might do it, please let us know. We really do need another planning and zoning person. Okay?
Quick question, just for information. Maybe it's not this group, anyway, who, who's in charge of the road going down there? I know, is there water, sewer, planning there?
What road are you talking about?
I guess it's from, uh, Center Street.
Center Road.
Center Road.
Who's in charge of the roads?
I mean, it's pretty, pretty rough as far as asphalt.
Center is the city street.
Center is off of Beachwood.
Okay. It's a city street.
That's in your county, right?
That's one you guys, that's one you guys are talking about putting on the next phase of water and sewer.
Oh, okay. So, and part of the reason we haven't fixed that road is because if we come in there to put water and sewer in, we tear the road up. So it's kind of wasteful to go in there, fix the road and then go care.
Was there a plan for that coming up?
Um, I don't know. Is that on the next year?
Yeah. Preliminary. So, so my recommendation is preliminary to the board, I think is aware of it. Uh, is for that to be the next phase, center.
Center.
Rock Harbor and is there another one?
Northfield.
Northfield, of course.
That's what he's proposing for our street plan for 2020.
No, no, not street, uh, water and sewer.
Oh, water and sewer. I'm sorry.
And so what comes first, water or sewer? There's been some discussion. The next round of Missouri State Department Fund application, their application cycle is typically March 1st is the deadline. So we're, and frankly, it'll be coming up rather soon to you to, to determine how we want to approach that. We weren't ready this month, maybe September, if, if not September, then certainly October, we'll be talking about that.
We're fortunate enough now to have the equipment that the guys can do patching in small sections. Um, we don't have the whole get up of paper and all that, but, uh, at least they can do some patching on some of the streets and they are.
Uh, I think it's broke up out of the garbage trucks and they're so big, heavy, you know? I wonder if it makes sense, and there's two of them come by. I wonder if it makes sense to just have one.
I wish I could answer that. The same thing happens in my street and they do.
You sure we won't?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's actually three garbage companies around here and they're passing each other. I don't understand that at all. But that is.
Truth. I assume that, uh, if you have the authority, you can have them bid on it. Just have one.
I thought that.
Can you have Steve share with us about our little campground up here on Beechwood? I didn't know. Our little campground up on Beechwood, can you have Steve share with us to kind of what they're?
Well, that's what this alien.
Okay. I don't hear very good. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. He is buying that portion of that lot. Do you have all the paperwork our board gave? Yeah. He's buying that piece off of, of the guy who has the lighthouse. He's buying 0.8 acres and he's supposed to be building a house on it. But then they're going to have some kind of alien park in the, in the.
Just to be clear. Just to be very clear, we told the owner, no more RVs. They're just not permitted.
The small lot.
Right. If they want to go forward with some additional RVs, he has to get a special use permit, which goes to planning, zoning, so forth. So he understands that and they haven't moved forward, uh, but.
No, we're keeping an eye on that.
That's what I was at.
He wanted to have RVs on that small piece and we said no. So he's now proposing the buddy with the 35 acres is talking about putting the RVs on there. Okay. Do we want to approve bills this month?
I'd like to make much of a pair of bills.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we need to adjourn this session to go into a closed session. The closed session is pursuant to our Almeso, or, or SMO 610, which is hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting a particular employee. So.
You can motion to adjourn the closed session.
Adjourn. You may leave.